The Board now reconvenes this meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 7:00 PM on February 7th, 2017 at the Plano ISD Administration Building. I'm Nancy Humphrey, Vice President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. Board President Missy Bender is unable to be here tonight. On the Board's behalf, I wish to extend a warm welcome to all who are present and to our web and video viewers. We will conduct our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals, which are to ensure continued improvement in student learning and to ensure efficient use of resources. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Dr. Brian Bingley, Superintendent of Schools, Trustees Tammy Richards, and David Stahle, Susan Modisette, Assistant Superintendent for Campus Services, Dr. Matthew Gutierrez, Assistant Superintendent for Employee Services, and Dr. Jim Wusso, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services. Seated to my right, pardon my voice, I've got mountain cedar killing me. Seated to my right are Carolyn Mobius, Board Secretary, Trustees Marilyn Hinton, and Dr. Yoram Solomon. Next to him is Dr. Keri Cooper, Assistant Superintendent for District Services, Steve Fortenberry, Chief Financial Officer, Dan Armstrong, Assistant Superintendent for Technology Services, Carla Oliver, Assistant Superintendent for Government and Community and Planning Initiatives, and Denise Gillespie, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and the Board of Trustees. I would like to thank our members of the Transportation Department for serving as greeters and for distributing the agendas and comment cards. Please join us in applauding these staff members for their assistance this evening. And now, at this time, I would like to share an inspirational message. As we gather this evening, I ask that we heed our vision statement that Plano ISD schools will empower students to be able to adapt to new learning and career opportunities throughout their lives, collaborate with and contribute to the global community, and be creative in their thinking. Our guidance as trustees must reflect our commitment to this statement and the vision set forth in our strategic plan. And now if you will please stand, and the flag is over here, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to the recognition part of the agenda. Ms. Oliver, do we have any student guests to be recognized this evening?
Yes, we do, thank you. We would like to recognize and ask you to stand, Troop 999, please. Thank you for being here. I think that's everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. We are already at Agenda Item Number Five. We will now move to the regular public comment portion of our agenda. For the public comment portion of our agenda, the Board has public comment cards that are accepted from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Cards are not accepted after 7:00 PM and are not transferable to other parties or speakers. All cards will be collected and given to Carla Oliver or a representative of the Communications Department who will present the speakers during this time. Ms. Oliver, do we have any speakers for public comment?
Yes ma'am, we have one.
All right, thank you. So I will continue reading, bear with me on this. Pursuant to the Board policies, BED local, BED legal, and BED exhibit, the Board -- is that Siri? It's not me. The Board may place reasonable restraints on the number, length, and frequency of presentations so long as it does not unfairly discriminate among speakers based on their viewpoint. The Board is not authorized to discuss or act on the public's comments or complaints if the subject is not on the agenda. If a member of the public or the Board inquires about a subject for which notice has not been given, the Board may only make a statement of specific factual information, recite existing policy in response to the inquiry, or refer the person to a staff person for more information or assistance. If the subject of the public comment is already on the agenda for the Board meeting, the Board may invite the speaker to stay until the Board reaches that topic on the agenda. Thirty minutes have been allotted to hear persons who desire to make comments for the Board. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall complete the appropriate public comment form before the meeting begins and indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. If you are not finished speaking at the end of your three minutes, I will interrupt you to -- so that we can move on to the next person. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board. Finally, pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.0821, the Board will not permit the presentation of personally identifiable information regarding a student and will not discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear a complaint or a charge against an officer or employee pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. Should a speaker wish to address one of these issues, they must do so through the appropriate local grievance policies, which are FNG local, DGBA local, or GF local. With all that said, Ms. Oliver, would you like to call the speakers or the speaker to the podium, please?
I'd be happy to, and I will make an effort to say the name correctly, so please forgive me if I don't. Mr. Richard Arvazoo.
I want to speak, I apologize for having you read that whole thing just for me.
I'm okay.
Good evening.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm going to tell you when there's one minute left, just so that you know.
I'm okay.
You never know.
There you go.
So good evening, PISD Board of Trustees. My name is Richard Arvazoo, I live at 621 Condor Drive in Murphy, and I have a third grader and an eighth grader at PISD schools. First and foremost, I want to appreciate the opportunity to speak with me here today. I request that you vote not to approve the non-traditional start date for the upcoming 2017-2018 academic calendar, and recommend the Board vote instead to implement this plan for the 2018-2019 academic year, and at the same time, plan for the 2019-2020 academic year. Although the intent of the revised schedule makes a lot of sense, ending before Memorial Day, balancing the semesters, et cetera, making such a dramatic change to the start date only six months in advance is inconsiderate and burdensome. Tweaking a day or two on the more traditional schedule, six months in advance is not an issue, but to make such a dramatic change is. Certain are families like mine that have planned trips, camps, or other activities based on what has been a late August start date for as long as I can remember and determine. I went online to check and stopped looking back beyond 2009. I would like to point out my frustration on how these proposed changes have not been communicated, in my opinion, effectively to parents. In fact, other than seeing a random post on Facebook last week, I would have been oblivious to process. I receive a barrage of texts, phone calls, emails, and notifications via newsletters if yearbook sales are about to end, or if there's a spirit night at a local restaurant, but not on something as important as dramatically changing an academic calendar for a school year that starts in approximately six months. Makes little sense. This should have been heavily communicated to parents. Again, with all this being said, I request that such dramatic changes be made to the 2018-2019 and subsequent academic calendars, and not the calendar that begins in six months. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. That's all? Okay, all righty, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, and we will address the Consent Agenda, which includes personnel recommendations, minutes of previous meetings, bids, purchases, and construction items from the Board. Are there any requests to remove an item or items from the Consent Agenda for further discussion? All right, as there are no items pulled for discussion, may I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda?
So move.
Second, and second, all right. Any discussion, I guess we've already had the opportunity for discussion on the consent, never mind.
No, it's good to do that after the motion.
It's just happen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, and the Consent Agenda passes unanimously. With the approval of the Consent Agenda, the Board will continue with the items for Agenda Item Seven, which is under Agenda Items for Discussion and Action. Excuse me, Item 7A, excuse me, is the 2017-18 Instructional Calendar, and I will turn this over to Ms. Carla Oliver, Assistant Superintendent of Government, Community, and Planning Initiatives, and she will begin the discussion of the 2017-2018 Instructional Calendar.
Thank you so much, Ms. Humphrey. I do have a bit of information to share with you this evening. Just to get us rolling a bit, I'd like to go through the -- pardon me, I have a little bit of a cough myself. I have a little bit of a process to go through, just to sort of inform, remind the Board and inform our audience as well. So, one thing I think we should think about is, historically, the district has observed the same adoption schedule for many years. I have a number of years under my belt here at Plano ISD, but I would say it also, since the district, the state began to mandate the start date, we have very succinctly followed the same adoption, I would say, presentation and adoption schedule for the calendar. And I think there may have been a question about that, and I wanted to share. Additionally, I will say, this is a bit of an add-on, one thing that I think has built up to our discussion this time is that we also applied and received the designation as a District of Innovation, and that happened over a process that bumped right into naturally our calendar adoption. So I wanted to share that in case there's any question about DOI. So, at our last meeting, which was on January 24th, three calendars were presented to our Board, one with an amended start date, so those reflected a start date of August the 16th, August the 21st, and August the 28th. We also brought to the Board the discussion and recommendation of the administration to begin August 16th, simply with the belief that it was the best instructional calendar for students. The Board gave direction to the administration to pursue an early midweek start with the addition of a teacher holiday in October, and so we'll be talking about that in a moment. I will say, during the review process since January 24th, we solicited feedback, and the results have been provided to each of you, not only last evening as a midterm report, I would say, of the results, and then bumped up for you this afternoon, concluding that we kind of stopped the responses for the purposes of reporting, but again, they have continued to come through. So I would say, during that time, as we solicited that feedback, it was clear that the preferences were divided between essentially two calendar options. Therefore, a calendar option with a start date of August 21st has been provided to you, which should look familiar to the item that you received back on January 24th. But I will say that this draft also includes the addition of a teacher holiday in October, which was one of the original directives of the Board. So with that, I'll conclude. Again, you've got a report at your desk that shows, just as a courtesy copy, you already had the information, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Bingley.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Oliver, and as Ms. Oliver stated, we did in fact make the recommendation as it related to the instructional calendar. When the Board gave us their desire to put in the additional teacher and student holiday on October 9th, we really discussed a lot of ways that we might do that, and ultimately felt that, again, with the idea in mind that what would be better for our instructional mission, as opposed to simply starting another day earlier, we brought forth a recommendation that we would examine the potential for starting our elementary and middle schools five minutes early to capture that time and be able to give us that student and teacher holiday. And so, with that in mind, that is still the recommendation we bring forward for all the reasons we have identified in the packet that we already gave you. But as Ms. Oliver mentioned, we know that the Board is interested in having a conversation about one that would start on the 21st, and so we brought that forward as well for your review and to serve as a foundation of discussion this evening. So with that, we, our recommendation remains what it was with what the Board asked us to look at changing, but offer both as a potential discussion point for the Board.
Okay, thank you. So, Board, we have a recommendation from the administration to adopt a 2017-18 calendar on August 16th. They've provided us another calendar. Is there, I need to call for a motion to approve. Do we have a motion?
I would move that we adopt Draft B for the next school year, which would be the starting date of the 21st.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Can I add something?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that one does not then require the five-minute, so that that one is not in.
I would like to say that both calendars would stay within what I would say the district's practice has been to Option Three waiver days, which is available through the state. Away from the 180 days of required instruction, we would be waiving three of those, which we've commonly done for professional learning.
Okay, thank you. And I'll point out that that was in the Consent Agenda that we passed, was three waiver days.
And it would be three for either, whichever you chose.
Right. Okay.
So, jumping into the conversation, I don't make many motions. I allow Yoram to do those. But the, I do want to be clear in terms of kind of what my thoughts are on a go-forward basis, and then hopefully, as a Board, we can come to a consensus. But the context of this, and of moving this back, goes back many, many years to when the state mandated a change in our start date. And at that time, this Board adopted a desire to have local control of our calendar, and every legislative session since then, we have tried to implement something, and our local representatives have been cooperative with us in filing those bills. And to date, nothing has happened, and then we had the opportunity through a District of Innovation to control our calendar a little bit better. I support the earlier start date, and I would support the following year after this year, you know, this calendar, to look to moving to an earlier start date. But I am sympathetic to the comments that we received from many parents about the change that we're trying to do, and maybe using this as a transition year. And so that's why I would suggest that we adopt on the 21st, start on the 21st for the next year, with the idea that we would also look to move even earlier for the following calendar year.
I agree completely, and actually, you go back to 2006 to find when we had the other calendar. For the first six years that my daughter was in PISD, we had that calendar. And at first, to an outsider, it seems kind of weird, but when you realize you've done 25% of the school year, and you get a nice week-long break in the fall, another 25%, you get to holiday, winter holiday, another 25%, you get to spring break, and you get to end before Memorial Day. The semesters are balanced, you have more instruction before standardized tests, more instruction for AP exams before their standardized tests. It really works well. I agree with David that this could be a transition year, but I'm certainly going to advocate strong for the next year, because it's about instruction. It's about how can we provide the best educational product for our students. And I think at the time, we shall, I'll show to open up the conversation to looking at the fall break versus the week-long at Thanksgiving. That's been a very recent change in our community, and so to go back and put all the options on the table for our families.
So I want to add, I think the first lesson we learned here is really that we needed to communicate that probably even earlier than the Board had given a general recommendation and collect input. I looked at the document with the input, and one of the things that jumped at me was that, in terms of the responses, the 334 responses at the time, and, you know, for everyone in the audience, or everyone who's watching us, sending us a response at 5:30 PM on the day of a Board meeting may miss kind of us seeing it. But 75%, over 75% were from staff, less than 25% were from, it was listed as parents and community. And I looked at the overall, overall, it still showed that 44% preferred, and that's including staff and parents and community, 44% preferred the middle option, which was the 21st, and only 40.4% preferred the early start. But if we actually try and balance and say, let's say that 50% were the parents and community, and 50% were, so I kind of tried to rebalance it, so 50/50, those numbers would change, and the amount of people, or percentage of people who preferred the 21st would be 49%, and only 35% would have preferred the earlier start. We've got a lot of emails on the issue, and I agree, the comment that was made here is right on. I mean, we're talking about a school year that started, a calendar that starts in six months. And in six months, I know that a lot of people make a lot of plans that spend longer than six months. I'm fortunate, I don't have any such plan, or at least I'm unaware, I was not informed by my family of a plan for that time, but it's hard. And I think that if there is one theme that came out of most of the messages that we got, the emails and the Facebook messages, one of them is really that we need to communicate things like that. And, you know, I can't tell you, when we were asking for a bond to be approved, I had two texts a day, two phone calls a day, one to my cell phones, one to my home phone, and now we're doing this, and we're not communicating as much. So I think we need to communicate more, I think we need to collect more input. I agree with David perfectly. We do, and we used to. I remember when we started, when my family started in school, that we used to know what the next year is going to look like, and we would not be six months ahead of the beginning of a school year, still working on this calendar. I understand the District of Innovation issue, but I'd be very supportive that what we do is have a transition year as early as possible, start working on 18, 19, have a calendar for 18, 19. So even if what we decide, and I still know that regardless of that, there are still issues with early start, but at least we have to start work on it early and figure out what we do in 18, 19. So I would be in favor of we start on the 21st this year, the middle, this would be the proposal that of 334 people, this would be the one that got the most support, and plan on 18, 19.
Okay, I would like to add a few things. I do want to make it clear, though, that this has been the time, traditionally, that we've always discussed the calendar. So, I know, you know, parents don't have time to listen to the school board meetings or attend school board meetings, but I do want to make sure that that is understood. That's how it has always been. My, I am willing to go with this transition year, but here is what I would like to happen, because I can see this happening again next year, because people are going to say, well, we started on the 21st. I really would like, is there any way possible that we can go ahead and settle on the calendar for the following year? I mean, I would think it could be so darn close, and then people, and honestly, I wasn't even thinking about it. I was planning a vacation for this summer, and I was looking into August. So, it, you know, and that was in December, because you have some great flights, are less expensive at times during that time. But if we do that, well, and I do want to encourage during, you know, the following year, sorry y'all, I'm tired, but I do think that we should send out a robo-call, we should tell all the PTAs, you know, please push this information out to your parents, because what do parents care about the most in students? They want to know when they have to go to school and when do we get out. So, I think that that's just a nice benefit that we could add to it. And then, it's fine, you know, I get lots of robo-calls and text messages and whatnot, it's okay, let's do that. But, yeah, I'd go ahead and support this, even though on my end, I received probably 80% of the messages I received was in favor of the August 15th. I just want to make that clear.
16.
16, 15. Close enough.
Yeah, I think to, you know, echo Carolyn's point, that I do think that we could, you know, we could ask Carla and Dr. Bingley to, you know, look at the calendar to see when the, for adoption for next year, if we can move that up or something. But in terms of the process, you know, I've, this is the same process we always use, and calendars are, the recommendations are vetted by staff, they're presented to the Board in an open meeting, they're published days before the meeting, so that if the public wants to come and comment, they have the opportunity to come and comment. And we look at them in one meeting, and then generally, we're asked to adopt them the next meeting, and we've done that for years. And so, you know, while I'm all for as much public input as people would like to give, we're also elected to make this decision, not to vet it out to a popularity contest with all of our staff, I mean, all of our constituents.
David, I was really, really surprised at the number of people who emailed us about this. I thought it was an awful lot, you know, and I hadn't received this many emails since we did the redistricting of the whole district. So I was surprised.
Well, I hope that this, then, if people are this active and interested in this, then I hope that they'll watch, and watch all of our agendas, and come and give us input on all of these items. But as far as a process is concerned, it's the same process that we have always used, and that's not to say that you always just do what you've always done, but there is an opportunity for public input on these items.
But David, I have to somewhat slightly disagree with you. You know, if you're trying to reach kids, don't try the website and don't try Facebook, go with Snapchat. If you want to reach the people in our community, right now, I counted, and I don't remember the number, of how many clicks you have to do to go on our website, just to get to the point that you find out that there is a calendar that's available. And I looked at our front page, we don't say anything about a calendar, we say something about the District of Innovation. We even talk about the election that's upcoming, but we're not talking about a calendar, and a calendar does have a big impact on our community. So, why did we get a lot of emails? Because I put it on my Facebook page, and I got a lot of comments in response, and I'm willing to bet that a lot of the emails came from that, and I know we're not overly excited about that, but we have to communicate. We have an opportunity to communicate, and communicate things that we know that people are -- I did not know half the things in the comments that we got. I did not know, I did not, I don't have kids that do UIL, so I never knew about that until I started hearing from parents and so on. So I think our ability to collect input is important. As a Board, we need to remember that our job application as a Board was not here to people sitting here, it was over there to the people sitting there. And so we do need to make sure that we communicate with them, and we need to make sure that we collect information from them. It's not a popularity contest, it's something that's affecting.
But the question is, is what topics are you, are we posting on Facebook, what are we not? I mean, you're opening up some things to, I'm all for communication, and I'm all for getting input from our constituents, certainly. Okay? So don't get me wrong, and the fact that we got a lot of emails on this particular topic, I think is good, I think it's positive. I want people to watch us and watch this Board, so that they can see what the school district, what this elected body is doing. But at the same time, we're the ones who are elected to represent them in making these decisions. And so we've got to make the decision.
Right, but that's why we need to get their input. We can't assume that the seven of us, six today, know everything.
I think it's incumbent upon us to gather all that information, put it in context of the educational requirements we have, and what we hope to do with the kids. And it was interesting, some of the emails would talk about, well, this doesn't help elementary kids, or this doesn't help, well, we have to worry about all the kids. So I think bringing together the best solution with community input that helps all the kids, it may not be the date that the community might vote on, but they also may be unaware of some of the intricacies. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to get that input, but then bring together our best knowledge to make the best decision. I support this as a transition year, but I'm also going to advocate hard next year for a slightly earlier start, so we can have the balance semester, so we can get more instruction ahead of time. If we can have that conversation this spring, then people can do all their advanced planning. And I think that was really the bulk of the comments, you need to give me time to plan.
Exactly. The feedback that I received on my Facebook page was that everybody was really excited about it, the problem was is they had already had plans. And so, that's the only reason I'm willing to budge on this, because I do have a fear the same problem's going to happen if we don't go ahead and adopt the following year as soon as possible. I did encourage Missy to please con- I did encourage Missy to please consider getting that on as soon as possible because I, you know, and I won't be up here, but at least it would keep from whoever else is up here from going through, you know, some of the conversations that we have had with parents just recently, so.
Did you have a comment you needed to make?
I did, I wanted to share one thing. We have a little bit of history of adopting or at least trying to communicate two years in advance, so that we do have that projected out. Not to say that we can't do that, but what I think might be a suggestion is that we try to nail down the start date and a potential end date. One of the things we ran into in trying to adopt that far ahead is that other districts and/or Collin College or some of the other folks have not done that and they've not, they've not committed to a particular week of spring break, which we know is an issue as well, we usually have a testing calendar that we're waiting for from the state. And it's not that I would advocate not to do that, but there will be some pieces that simply won't be confirmed.
Well, and that gives us an opportunity where, you know, so if the board gets to vote on a planned date, at least we have, this is what we're hoping for and then we can have some kind of information that, you know, of what we need to wait for to really know when spring break is. And then at least they know.
Okay, well, I would like to point out that the calendar is a complex animal and as Tammy pointed out, it's very difficult to make it, make all the variables work. And what was not in our favor this year is August began with a Tuesday and with the state's mandate of a fourth Monday start, it pushed us into the fifth week of August, which really is what I would consider way late for a start date. I'm in agreement with the transition for this year because I realize that the Districts of Innovation wasn't approved, a final approval wasn't until December twelfth. And I know that this team has worked diligently to come up with a calendar in that amount of time. I mean, and I'm the one that has harped the most about the calendar start date over the last six years, every legislative session, y'all have heard me harp about that. So I am so thankful that we passed the Districts of Innovation, it gives us a lot of flexibilities to be innovative and one of those flexibilities is this calendar start date. And, you know, I jotted down, I mean, the primary purpose of our calendar, it's an instructional calendar. And so that's, here's some of the things that make it very difficult. We have to balance semesters, or we would like to balance semesters, you have to balance grading periods, think about that. Exams before winter break and balancing spring break with our college partners and the UIL regulations and dates, not to mention STAR testing and all of those other things. So it, I want to point out that it's not just an easy, let's pick a date and start and end. And I will support an aggressive early start in the next year, seeing that we have this transition. And so I think that developing the calendar for the next year when we get the data, let's get that out there, I agree with that. And I think that we probably have to keep our ear to the ground on this legislative session that's currently in process, there might be some changes that come through. So it may be that we can't develop a new calendar for the next following year, the second year calendar, until the close of the session, that may be a possibility.
That was a very good point, that was one thing I failed to mention as a, as one thing that kept us from absolutely committing to a second year calendar is because of legislative action. But again, simplifying what we're actually trying to confirm, we will work really hard on that.
Okay, and I would also point out that we've had a lot of parents that say, hey, look at what Forney did. Well, they have come up with a hundred and seventy day calendar, we work on a hundred and seventy-seven days, which includes our three waiver days for professional development and two days for early release. But Forney, I don't believe, runs a triple cycle of bus routes. So in order for us to take advantage of the minutes of instruction that Forney is doing, we're taking advantage of, in the sixteenth start date, we were going to take advantage of a five minutes early start on the elementary school, so we have the-
In middle.
In middle, okay, we have the flexibility to do that. But some of that is easier said than done because if we add, what I think Forney had to do was add thirty minutes to their middle school, thirty minutes to their elementary and fifteen minutes to their high schedule. So with a triple, we run the same buses three times throughout the district. And so for that to work, our kids wouldn't get home for dinner, I'm afraid. So that's another complexity that would have to be ironed out. So in summary, I agree with what my fellow board members have said, but I wanted to point out for our community, the complexities of the calendar and, you know, balancing all of those things and keeping all those variables working is not easy. But I do appreciate that we've heard from our constituents and they want to see a compromise and I think that's what we've offered here. Any other commentary?
I would say one little fun visual, I just brought to show the pieces that we've received, most of those reflected in the report that you got, but wow.
Which is, and by the way, as a result, we have changed, if the consensus appeared to have been start on the sixteenth or the fifteenth, the previous plan until now and we changed to the twenty-one, then that was helpful. And that's why it's important that we communicate. And you know, to the point of what do we communicate? Important things, common sense, calendar is important, let's communicate things like calendar, not only bond.
I know we're going to vote, I just want to make sure that, the point that Ms. Oliver made, I want to make sure isn't lost on us. Everybody kind of assumes we do have to wait for the legislative session, that makes sense. But there are things, those issues that connect with other districts, we hear loud and clear when we don't seem to be in touch with them. So it is, I don't want anyone to assume, well, once the legislative session's done, well, where is it? Because there are some other things that I think prudence would dictate and our own community would, has dictated that we at least try to gain some of that understanding. And again, we'll work like, as you mentioned, start and end time, can we plug that in? But that becomes a dangerous game too, when you aren't sure exactly what some of the elements of that will be.
We really made a run at it a few years ago, so we'll make a run at it again.
If, then, we're wanting to wait till the legislative session ends, then it looks like we're talking about August.
But why would we? Because we are DOI, so that's the only reason why I'm asking, it shouldn't matter for District of Innovation.
I think we're waiting to see whether or not District of Innovation survives.
Well.
I mean, that would be the, that would be the point of bill for what we're trying to do, but the point is-
But there's no ramblers.
But we can make the assumption, we can make the assumption that it starts and remember that the biggest issue is going to be the start of the year, not the end of the year because the end of the year comes nine months later, nine, ten months later. So if the issue is whether eighteen nineteen starts mid-August or late August, that tells you what that summer looks like. And if we make the assumption it starts early and we end up starting late, that adds to the vacation, that doesn't take away from it.
Yeah, I think that that-
Make a worse case assumption.
That wasn't the point I was trying to make, I'm trying to determine when we're going to make that decision. If we're waiting for the legislative session, then we as a board won't revisit this until August, right?
That's if they go into special, which you expect they will.
Yeah, but I don't think they're going to-
I would think that's correct and then some of the things that Ms. Oliver talked about actually go beyond August. I mean, we, we just have to, we'll, we'll, we'll-
We'll do best.
We'll work hard and absolutely-
So August would be the earliest and then-
I would think so.
And we will try to move the process up.
When is their deadline to file bills, so isn't that in April?
I think it's March first.
I would just think you would know sooner than later if there's any concern about DOIs and I don't think that's their concern this year, I think their concern is the budget. And DOI is going to be just fine.
Just in full disclosure, there is dialogue, just as late as today, right? See, we had to get information because there was talk about eliminating waiver days. We had to get your commitment today that we can move forward with the assumption these waiver days are going to be here because there's been dialogue that they may go away. And they may go away for the following year out of this session.
They gave us no commitment for eighteen nineteen as far as waiver days.
So there are other things beyond District of Innovation that affect the kind of mix that is the instruction.
But we were talking about start date, that's the only reason why I'm saying that. If we had a planned start date, I don't want to beat it to death, but I'm just thinking, you know, y'all, we've received the comments we received this time and I can promise you that if you wait too late, you're going to get drilled with the same kind of comments or saying, you know, this is what we expected. Because parents don't, they just don't have the opportunity unless things are really changing, communicating it, it's going to happen again, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the table and it is to approve the calendar for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year beginning on August twenty-first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, and the motion carries unanimously. I got myself out of order here. Okay, we'll now move on to Agenda Item Eight, which is the Reports section of our agenda and the only report tonight is our Legislative Update. And as indicated in our Board Operating Procedures, during each legislative session, the Board includes an item on the agenda at every board meeting or work session for an update on advocacy efforts. During the session, and not just a review at the end of the session, we will elevate conversation to the Board Table to discuss current legislation in progress that we are monitoring and about which we are responding to our legislators. This includes bills that we are tracking associated with our approved legislative priorities, as well as actions that have taken place, including how the legislators in our delegation have voted. Additionally, it's an opportunity to discuss the work that our Board has done regarding our legislative priorities and may include any independent political advocacy on an issue that is not a district legislative priority. At this time, I will open the discussion. Do I need to turn it, I'm sorry, I need to turn over to you at this point, are you?
I'm actually not prepared to talk about a legislative report in completion, but I can share-
Okay.
-one of the things that the Board, I don't know if you've collectively discussed this, but in my conversation with President Bender and certainly with you as well, with our legislative, I would say, not just our initiatives, but how we get out there and communicate about that and put our finger on the pulse. We are going to have, I believe, an item on every agenda to talk about legislative changes and/or priorities and news. And so I was asked to put together a scorecard of such, and this is a first attempt at that. The information largely on it is current, but some things may have changed since I first put this together. So I'll ask you to notice the large word of draft in the upper right-hand corner as it's not a complete report, but it's actually just giving you the idea of a format that you might expect as we go through the legislative session and coming to you at the Board.
All right, I looked at this draft today and I think it's very well done and it really helps us at the Board Table to-
Thank you.
...review these bills and in association with our legislative priorities and we really appreciate it.
You bet.
Are there comments that our Board members would like to talk about as far as our advocacy efforts that we've been doing and bills that maybe we're looking at as well? I've been looking at those bill summaries that Steve Fortenberry so graciously sends over, I'll open it for discussion at this time. You go first.
Well, I will get the ball rolling and certainly in the essence of communicating to those in the audience to make sure there's clarity around things that we are bringing forth. I've shared with our Commissioner and with legislators and will continue to do so as it relates to the current methodology that is proposed for A to F school accountability. And I want to make sure everyone understands that when I connect with them, I, it isn't about saying I don't like something, it's rather how could it be better? And I have consistently told them, I believe we ought to be giving our taxpayers and our citizens and our parents more information about the effectiveness of their schools, not less. And just make no mistake about it, right now, the one measure of student outcome for elementary and middle school students are STAR results, that is it. And so if, for those of you who believe that that measure represents excellence in schools beyond, way beyond all others, because there aren't any others, then what the legislature currently has in front of it is just for you. And I shared with our chamber not long ago, I have a lot of parents who say, I've never heard our parents say to us that, you know, I just, I love our school, I love my child's teacher, I just wish they would focus on standardized tests more. But that's what's coming. And so I would say to those of you who are here with us tonight or those watching, if that is what you believe should be, then your wish is about to come true. If, on the other hand, we should really be looking at a much more multimetric approach to this, then I would offer you your involvement in sharing with our legislative delegation that if we can't find a more multimetric way to judge the success of our schools, then we ought to go back and require the TEA, they tried by the way. And a group of folks came together and in the end they said, well, we don't have anything that we think we can mandate and so we're just going to go with STAR results. And I think that there is a better way and we'll continue to ask them to pursue it. Get with school districts, get with local boards, bring people around that conversation. We have outcome indicators out there on our website that are qualitative, quantitative, they connect to things about safety and about efficiency and about outcomes for students, about their involvement in their extracurricular opportunities, that's how, that's how I believe schools should be measured. But that's not what's going to happen pretty soon in the state of Texas. For those of you who think, wow, maybe we focus a little more on standardized test scores than we should or tests than we should, you have not seen anything yet. And I speak to you from someone who came from a state that had A to F and you wonder where art goes and you wonder where the media specialists went in elementary schools, don't be surprised when there's only one measure that counts, when things that you hold dear suddenly find their way on the chopping block as we try to figure out how do we dedicate our time, our resources, our people. I think this Board and this Superintendent tells our community and our citizens a lot, we will make decisions here in Plano ISD that are right for kids. I don't speak for all of Texas, I will speak for Plano ISD, but I will tell you, that's what's coming in the state of Texas and you ought to know it now and get engaged before later. Was that enough?
That was great.
Okay.
Nobody wants to follow that.
Yeah, I don't want to follow that, but I think I will. You know, our Board has a subcommittee and it's the Legislative Subcommittee and David Staley, Missy Bender and I serve on the committee. And we've been working on correspondence to improve the communication, if you will, of some of the matters that have been spoken at different hearings. And I will say that Carolyn Mobius and Missy Bender and I, along with the Superintendent and our CFO and Yoram, I forgot because you weren't on the panel with us, you spoke earlier that day, but you did too. We all testified in front of the Senate Property Tax Reform and Tax Relief Subcommittee in October, they were traveling around the state, I think they had five stops. And I was told, and I haven't fact-checked this, but I believe we were the only school district that testified before that committee. And each one of us had our own message and ironically, we covered different things and I think we covered it very well. One of the things I wanted to express is that I proudly served this district and I've noticed that my, this is what I told in my testimony, I hear from my community members that they're paying too much in property tax, too much of it leaves a different district and they don't know how it's being spent. So we are making a concerted effort to talk about a new word we came up with, it's called tax transparency and it's to provide transparency in taxation. And I can't imagine who won't get behind that. And I've talked to probably six hundred different people in various audiences, homeowners groups- groups and PTA's since November, to get this message out, and I've borrowed our CFO, Steve Fortenberry's presentation that he gave to the board, a lot of his slides, so I copied. But it's such a compelling message. Our taxpayers don't always know how the property taxes are growing and where they're going. And so if anyone is listening to this right now, I urge you, as you said, get engaged with your legislators, and ask them for the transparency. And one of the bills that we're looking to get authored by a representative is one for that, so that we have it on our tax statement. This much money I am paying doesn't stay in the district. Those are kinds of messages that we want. One of the other messages that I said in this testimony was, I want to make sure that if we want to give property tax relief, we have got to address and reform school finance. Until we reform school finance, you will never be able to have property tax relief, and I will stop talking.
By the way, Dr. Bingley, to your point on testing, standardized testing, I know that there is a bill that seems to be getting pretty good bipartisan support, that does the first step, which is get transparency to the amount of money that's being spent on, on the standardized testing, and that amount of money is not only the testing itself, what you pay the vendors, but also the time that our teachers spend on standardized testing or things related to that. So even getting the transparency would be a good step towards understanding the magnitude of standardized testing, even as part of the budget.
I'll just have to give kudos for Jeff Leach, because he's one of our local delegation. He's a representative in District Sixty-Six, I believe, and he wrote House Bill-
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, I do that every time, it's math, that's sixty-six. House Bill thirteen thirty-six, relating to financial reporting by a school district, regarding the costs associated with administering certain assessment instruments. And I add that a cost to that, we'll be preparing that report.
So, just talking, speaking big picture about the format of what we, what we received here, I mean, I like this call, I think y'all have done a good job with this, and I'm looking forward to seeing this throughout the rest of the session, because this is, you know, these are our adopted priorities, and so to track, to be able to track those bills that, that support our priorities, that we can then encourage our representatives to support, and hopefully our constituents will reach out to our representatives to support those items. Having those all in one place is, is gonna be very valuable, I think, for us for the entire session. You won't find many school boards that are more active in Austin, in this state, than this one, and we aren't always best friends with our representatives, but we do work with them on a lot of things, and, and when we can agree, they go to bat for us.
And, and we're gonna be there next week?
That's right, four of us.
Four of us? Five.
Is it five?
Maybe four.
You know, to that point, also, our Senator Van Taylor has written two bills that we have requested, and one had to do with the calendar, which we've kind of found our way around that, but I think that he should still follow that cause, and also is the elimination of, giving the boards the ability to terminate contracts for Chapter Twenty-One employees when, upon felony conviction. You have to remember, that's upon felony conviction, not arrest, but that's one that, one of our-
This board came up with.
This board came up with, actually, it was David Stolli's observation.
Well, and I would like to encourage the citizens to ask their legislators to please approve wording on the tax statement that does pull out the amount from the school district that clearly is, stays with the state of Texas. That was something that I was kind of joking around with when I said at one of these school board meetings, but it seems like it's caught some action, and I really hope it does, because so many of us don't realize where all the taxes go, and I think it's fair for we property taxpayers, and I pay it for my business as well as at my home, that I know what they're keeping of what I'm submitting.
Well, I'm kind of mouthy tonight, I'm sorry. I usually am pretty quiet. I wanted to point out one thing, because I know we have scouts from Troop Nine 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 in the room, and I, I wanted to just point this one out, it's not one of our legislative priorities, but I think it really is something that I would love to follow. Senator Royce West has proposed Senate Bill Five Eighty-Five, and there is a companion bill, House Bill Five Forty-Five, Representative Anderson, and it's, it's just giving the opportunity for patriotic societies such as Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and Boys and Girls Clubs, to prevent, present during school hours, so that they can increase their membership. The state of Tennessee passed a similar bill last year, and the, I've, I've heard that the Boy Scouts membership went up twenty percent, and so I think that's an interesting bill to follow.
It's a meeting.
Well, I don't mean to be, I'm sorry.
Nancy, no one mentioned vouchers, which is one of the items that your legislative agenda said that we oppose.
Right.
There is a voucher bill, and it kind of ties the worst of everything that you've talked about together. To me, ties in the tax transparency for each, for the average student in Plano that would leave our district and go to a private school, taxpayers here would have to send Austin another six thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars in recapture. More than likely, the state would not even send the parent that much for a voucher, so it begs the question, what is the state going to do with all of the extra money that they would collect from the taxpayers if the students leave? You talked about the A to F accountability system. The accountability system that's included for private schools is that the comptroller may, not shall, but may send out an annual parent parental satisfaction survey, so it's not even required to be conducted, and it looked like it was two questions. Do you like your school? Are you happy, something like that? So we would certainly invite that system instead of the A to F, a very complex, complicated system that we have. Few other things, the parents could use vouchers to pay for their child's AP test or any test related to college admission. Most of the parents in public schools have to pay those costs themselves. There's no upper limit on family or household income, so you could presumably have, let's say, the owner of the Dallas Cowboys who had a child that he wanted to send to private school, and if that was in Plano, would be paying six thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, so that someone that certainly can afford that could get a break. It doesn't benefit those who, who can't afford it, because the private schools can still balance bill them for whatever the difference in their tuition compared to that voucher is. There's just so many, so many things wrong with it, that, that's one that we certainly hope doesn't come to pass.
All right, very good point, and that's one of our big legislative priorities and has been for many years. One of the things that I also wanted to point out is, one of our legislative priorities that I think Carolyn helped with was getting the absences, I'm sorry, I'm losing my place here, but for students who have been exempt from, because of their excellent grades, they're exempt from their final, we, we can't let them miss the test, you know, they have to come and sit for the test, they can't be exempt, if you will. They can be exempt from the grade, I guess, and they can draw Mickey Mouse on the Scantron, and it won't hurt their grade. But Jeff Leach has filed a bill, and I don't remember the number, because I can't hear, is that it? Yes. House Bill Fifteen Sixteen, relating to the authority of a school district to excuse from school attendance a student who is exempt from the administration of a final examination, and their absence will not impact the weighted average daily attendance, which is how we are reimbursed for, so it won't cost the district money to give that high-performing student his or her exemption from coming to sit down for the final, so-
Is this still called the Catherine Zhang?
Probably.
That's what I call it.
She's, she was a student in Plano West last year, she's now in Harper, and she was the one to ask for it.
Wonder if she did Mickey Mouse on her Scantron. Are there any other comments? No more legislative talk? All right, as Yoram said, we are going to be going down for Plano Legislative Days on the fifteenth and sixteenth next week. Followed in the, later in the month is Collin County Days, and we'll be going down again. Some of us, I will be out of town, but I, I just want you to know how much this board really is actively advocating for its community in the legislature. And we will move on, and I promised not to talk so much at the next meeting. Got on my soapbox. We will move to Agenda Item Nine, and I now convene the fifteen-minute public comment session on non-agenda topics. Each speaker has up to three minutes. Ms. Oliver, do we have any comment cards? We do not. All righty, then, with that, with no further business, this meeting of the Board of Trustees adjourned, is adjourned.